So I'll call the meeting to order, sorry for a little bit of a delay here, we had an executive session. We're coming back into open session at this point. The next item on the agenda is the high school advisors who are not able to be here this evening, so we will move forward from there. Next item, number five, is the public forum. See anyone which to speak in the public forum? There is another public forum towards the end of the meeting as well. And let me, next is Teaching and Learning Showcase, but before we get to that, if you don't mind, I would want to, I want to move an item up. Item seven E1, which is a grant presentation from Watertown Cable. So you don't have to stay the whole time. So we have a very generous gift here from the Watertown Cable to the Watertown Public Schools. So we're going to add you at this point in...
You ready now?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight I represent both the schools and WCA TV. I'm the Watertown Public Schools representative on the board of the cable studio as well as their president. Our board meets each month to discuss the business of the cable studio and public programming. Watertown Public Schools has been very lucky to have a partnership that we do with WCA TV and vice versa. The studio offers our students a chance to learn with professional-grade equipment and in state-of-the-art facilities. If you haven't been down to the cable studio, I highly encourage you to do it. You'll be amazed and impressed with all the recent renovations. And WHS offers a studio, great content composed of work done by our students. Through the WCA TV's willingness to allow us to offer five courses in the studio, our students learn the art of radio broadcasting, television production, and filmmaking. To this day, we have students come in after hours and in the summer to continue what they've learned in class to pursue their ideas of art. I'd now like to introduce the Executive Director of WCA TV to present more information about the class and a gift from the studio to the school to show our appreciation and excellent partnership.
Good evening, I'm Helen Chatel. I recognize many of you. I'm the Executive Director of Watertown Cable Access. I've been here in Watertown now six years. And in that time, I've seen that studio usage go from one class to six classes now. And just about every class appears full with students, which is a wonderful thing. And we're seeing the students come in after school, on weekends, volunteering. So again, it's a great project, a program we have going together. In 2018, Watertown Cable Access staff produced 154 education shows ranging from sporting events to school events, high school graduation, interviews with prospective principals and athletic directors. To that end, in 2018, we had 119 student-produced shows, total in 106 hours. And that's from January 1st, 2018, to December 31st, 2018, which is really excellent. They're really on par with creating content and becoming more creative. They've done everything from Dear WHS, which is a programming, a program that tells freshman students what they can expect over the next four years, told by other students. So it's a great perspective. We also have radio programming where they discuss sports, politics. It's really refreshing to hear young voices talking and hearing their, talking about cultural differences and, you know, things that they're seeing going on in the community. So it's, it's, you know, if you're ever, you know, on your computer and you want something to listen to during the school day, tune into our website, there's a link for the internet radio station. You can hear what students have to say. It's, it's really enlightening, I love it. And so does the rest of the staff. In our small studio, we have 12 IMAX all equipped with Adobe Creative Cloud. So students have a range from Premiere editing to Audition to After Effects. Students are all able to, if not take the class in high school, they can come after school and we will teach them as well. So we do have students who are taking advantage of that because they weren't able to get into a class due to their schedule, but they wanted to learn how to advance their skills. And so they've been able to do that. I also had a student last summer who wanted to advance his skills over the summer. And he came in and we certainly gave him hands-on experience, so it was great to see. In 2018, we added a new studio set. So we have, we have the ability to have four different physical sets in our studio. In early 2019, we added three more studio cameras, so we have six cameras in the studio, which gives us plenty of different angles now in the studio. And it was a great addition to Watertown High School, was able through, I believe, the Perkins Grant to purchase new props. So it goes, it complements the new set very well. So moving forward, I think we have a great program. We would like to continue working with the school. And at this time, I would like to make a $40,000 donation on behalf of WCA TV to Watertown Public Schools.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yeah, any, any questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's great. I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity for, for students of Watertown to have that in the building and, you know, all the work that goes into the classes and the shows, it's, it's great. So, you know, look forward, we have a, at some point here, in the soon, in the near future, we'll have a, a new building, but hopefully we'll have space for that to even expand beyond what it is now.
I hope so.
So thank you for all the work.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Heidi can deposit this. Like you put it in a deposit. All right, thank you very much. All right.
Be a photo op?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's a good photo op.
With the sign.
I think you and Helen should stand with a check.
I don't know if anybody else want to be in it?
I think it's...
You're on the board, I mean.
Yes, but I think the glory is here.
I'll get, I'll make sure I get a look at the background.
That's great.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again. So I'll go back to the agenda, Teaching and Learning Showcase. The item A is the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Program. Do we have a presentation on that? Do you want to add to the beginning?
What I would like to add is I recently spent some time with our friends at, downstairs at the Phillips Building. I learned a lot about our programming that we have down there, formerly known as the Family Network. And now it is the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Program. I must admit, I did not realize the depth of the work that they do. And I wanted to make sure that the entire community was aware of the great work that happens down there and make sure that families who might be able to take advantage of the, the services that are offered hear about it and, and do so. So tonight we have Kathleen Maney and Karen Feeney, who are both integral parts of the program, who are going to give us a little overview on what happens at the Phillips.
Great. So, welcome, thank you so much for having us come and talk about this. I've been told I have five minutes and I am timing myself because I like to talk about early childhood. So you're getting two ends of the spectrum, the early and then the high school. So let me just see if I can get this to work, and I'm going to hand it off. Or maybe Renee?
The side, the side little, is there a side little slide slider?
Slider's gone, so it must...
Can one of our lovely high school students show us? If I had a preschooler here, they would help me.
Oh, you got it.
Okay, here we go, we're good.
Oh, there you go.
We're all set. If I had a four-year-old, I'd be all set.
We're using preschool technology.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
There we go.
So the history of the grant. So just to give a little bit of context, I know John and Mike have been here for a very long time on the school committee on and off and sort of know the history of some of our grants. The Watertown Public Schools has actually written this grant for over 20 years. It's actually had different names in the past, and some of them will sound familiar. The Community Partnership for Children Grant, the Watertown Family Network, and the Parent-Child Home Program Grant. They are now all encompassed in this one grant called the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. Next slide. So the organization, how we get this grant is it actually comes through the bottom office of education. It's the Department of Early Education and Care, which is focused on sort of the zero-to-five population. And when you're talking about childcare, they go up to about 12 years, nine months. Through that, the Watertown Public Schools, through the Special Education Department, and then down into the Early Childhood Department, Early Childhood Coordinator, and then the grant staff. So that's sort of how we're structured and how the funding flows into our department. So why do we do this? What is this all about? So basically, around 2000, Neurons to Neighborhoods came out. It was a huge study, you might have heard about it. Tom Hanks was on the TV doing this whole presentation about brain growth. And basically saying that the zero-to-three timeframe is the largest time that the brain will grow. It's the widest window we have to make interventions and changes in educational gains. And, and the bottom line, that little purple-gray line actually is the amount of money we actually input into that period of the most growth. So I just kind of wanted to put that up. And then, why was the Department of Education thinking about this back in about 2005? Well, they were thinking about this for a lot of different reasons is, at that point, the Commonwealth created three separate Departments of Education. And they actually created the Department of Early Education and Care. And it was really launched to consolidate services for families and young children in the Commonwealth. And this quote is probably over 100 years old. And it really captures the essence of what this grant is really about. Is that, you know, we need to do things differently. We need to understand research and science and academics and families and how our communities change over time. And I think it's really something that's so poignant to this grant. So what do we do? So this is, I think, what DeeDee was talking a little bit about. We do a lot of things. We do, the majority of what we do is really around families and young children with play groups. We offer about 13 play groups per week. We operate 42 weeks of the year and five weeks during the summer. Every time we touch a family, they come into a play group. This represents the first three quarters of the year, so starting July 1 until, January, March 30th. That was, we touched 5,237 families. They are duplicated because we have to count them every time they come. So it averages about 16 families come to every single group we're offering every single week. We also have to ask impact questions. So we, about 283 families actually said they actually increased their knowledge of child development by actually coming to these groups. In addition, we also parent support groups and literacy groups. So we offer five of those per week, 42 weeks a year, five weeks during the summer. It represents about 381 families, or about averaging about 12.7 families per group. And one of the biggest things we're looking for is the impact on reading. So one of the things that we're really targeting, are parents reading more after participating in our groups. And parents are, which is excellent. We also do special events. We do Saturday events for families that are working that can't come out to our play groups. We do special events like our early childhood fairs. We do story walks. On June 4th, we're going to be doing a Make Way for Duckling Walk, if anyone wants to come and join us. We collaborate with our community members about four times a year. We have about maybe 15 to 20 community members that come and are part of that conversation. And then we do community events with them as well. We have a digital platform, so we're trying to be a little bit better. A lot of our families love the digital piece. They have, everyone seems to have a phone, which is wonderful. So we have a Weebly website, and too bad Toni left because she helped launch it with us. The next page, if you go on any given day, you can kind of see what we're doing. It tells you every day of the week what we have. And then we have a map, and then we have the MBTA search engine, so parents could figure out how to get where they are to where we are, because we operate not just here, but we're also in the different community locations. And then, sort of like, that sounds lovely, but what does that have to do with the Watertown Public Schools? What is zero to three? So what we've done is we actually are connecting through this using the actual preschool programs, but scaffolding them back in a child developmentally appropriate way. So we actually connect to the Watertown Public Schools' building blocks, math program, and opening the world of learning. And then, as you can see, this is like the first six week of our playgroup. So this is what happened in September. So if you can see, you'll see the different dates. You'll see all the different developmental areas, and then you can kind of see what we're doing to support families and having these vast, rich experiences that they maybe didn't know that they had access to or they could do. So what do we do? So a lot of what we do is actually, we have to do a lot of adapting. We really get to know parents, we get to know where children are at by watching them, talking to their parents, interacting with them. We work on our environments. If you've come downstairs, you can see how beautiful the environments are. We try to have those everywhere we go. We obviously work with children's interest, connection to their real world is so incredibly important. We do a lot of stuff with Boardmaker and signage. And we think a lot about how do you have all children of all different ages and families with all different backgrounds and cultural differences and their level of education be able to access what we're doing. So, we play hard. And I think a lot of times people think play, it's like such a bad word, like, oh, they're just playing. But this is meaningful play, and this is what children need to be doing. And we need to do it, as you can see, like, we are planned, we have a strong curriculum that we're using, but we play to get those concepts across with parents and children. And Fred Rogers, everyone loves him. Nope, keep going, you can do this. So the ages and, the toolbox for CFCE. So there's other things that we do as well. We do, we offer an Ages and Stages questionnaire. And this is available at every single one of our groups. And what it is, it's a great way to just to check in with parents and children. So the questionnaires look a little bit like this. They cover kind of the four main areas of development. When they fill it out, we score it for them, we send them the email of what it looks like. And then what we do is we actually attach like what the development, like if you want to work more on Fine Motor, we'd be like, Mark, here's what you can do with your child for Fine Motor. So we do that with a lot of different parents. Sometimes we do it, you know, they come up every like two months, and then it goes to about four months, and then every six months. The Department of Realization, oh, sorry, Education and Care is incredibly demanding of how we document what we do. So we actually have to do these quarterly reports where we have to cross-reference all of this information and actually show that we're impacting. So not only are we doing the work, but we're always constantly measuring how we're doing that work and are we actually having any impact? And that's incredibly exciting. And anyone, I would be happy to share any of this with anyone who is interested in any of these reports, anytime. So some of the challenges we have, I wish to say, oh, everything's so rosy down there. But, you know, we work in a community that has a really high ELL family, families. 20% of our citizens actually weren't born in the United States. And sometimes there's a lot of cultural misunderstandings. So we've been working enormous amount on focusing on access. We, probably one of our biggest challenges is really thinking about the cultural piece around screenings and developmental milestones. Really, in some cultures, trying to respect that that's, maybe kids never walk for the first year they're carried. And that, you know, that's going to look like on a screening tool that that child is falling behind. But in fact, that's culturally the norm for that family. So we're kind of juggling a lot of different things down there. A big thing, which I talked to, I know Kathy and DeeDee about, is transportation. It's our most at-risk families find it really hard to get to where we are. And it's not just that the bus line doesn't come there, there's cultural pieces as well to that. But that's probably one of our biggest ones that, you know, I laughed about taking the bus out and picking people up. But, you know, it's been really, really hard. And I think that's going to be an ongoing challenge for us for the next 10 years. And then the last one is just getting access. This is something that actually we found out in the fall, is only about one-sixth of our families in Watertown are accessing WIC, which is crazy. So like, where are the other five, six of the families that qualify for this service aren't getting support? So part of our community meetings, WIC actually comes to this meeting. We talk a lot about these access points and why they're falling apart for families. Next slide. So some of our solutions are, one was asking better questions. We started really thinking about what is it that we're asking parents so that we can plan better? So it goes back a little bit more to that thoughtfulness around, if we want to know if people are reading more, we have to ask questions that ask that, so we can get those answers. One of the other things is the cultural isolation, is we do an enormous amount of work prepping some families for these transitions that are going to happen in their lives, whether it's to preschool or to kindergarten. So we have a lot of families that are very nervous about interfacing with the public schools. Somehow, like, we feel different than the Watertown Public Schools, although everything says Watertown Public Schools. So we face a lot of those challenges. And we do an enormous amount of work, especially our home visitors who go out into the homes, who do the literacy support, are the most amazing group of women we have. They'll do the pictures, they'll take people on tours personally, I mean, I can't even tell you. And then we have, we've been really thinking about access. And this last one is really around, what are we doing to help parents access all of this information? So some of the things we did around the ages and stages, because it's a questionnaire and it's data and it looks pretty scary if you can't read English really well, is we translated what it was into 10 different languages so that parents could understand that we're doing this as a support for you, this is for your learning, we, we don't really care what, you know, we just want to help you. And that has been a huge help. We've probably doubled our ASQs just by helping parents better understand what the goal was for that. We've been thinking a lot about really doing the books in the home languages. We've been thinking a lot about really doing the books in the home languages, having the QR coding so that parents can QR code the book, so they don't have to read it, they can read it, read along, like with someone else. And we've actually been doing a lot of books that actually don't even have stories, so you can just do a picture walk. So I would have to say, access through all these different things, whether it's transportation, language barriers, cultural isolation, I think that's an ongoing thing that not only we're feeling, but I think a lot of our partners out in the field, like Head Start and WIC and Wayside, are also feeling that same thing. All right, I'm almost done, I promise. Parents, feedback. So a lot of times, we ask kind of questions on that marker of, you know, are you reading more? Why are you reading more? How many times are you reading more? But then at the very bottom, we say, can you tell us anything, just share anything you want with us? So I just picked out a few things that I thought were really great. I think the first one is really about sensory play, is that the parent had never thought to do it with their child, and since they were introduced to it weekly, they were like, this is amazing. And I think it's just the power of having that opportunity for parents to see this. A lot of the stuff we use is like, I call funky junk. You don't need to buy it at Lakeshore, you can make it yourself. We try to do that with a lot of our stuff. You know, I think a lot of people really feel about the, the support in the engaging community at the family center has been really critical, and it's really connected them to their community. So I think it's great. I mean, I have to say, you know, it's been a wonderful 20 years. And then, if anyone has any questions, or if you need more information, we're here five days a week, doing lots of playgroups, you can always find us. And then this one is just one that I personally find that, you know, we all have an opportunity to make a difference, no matter how small or how large that mark is. And that happens to my daughter, who's now 12, but I just love the big chair and the little kid. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, thank you very, thank you very much. Questions, comments? Thank you for all the work that you do. Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for your work. Yeah, I have three kids, and the network was a really big part of raising them when they were little, and it was a great community, and I just really appreciate the hard work you're putting into this, so thank you.
Well, you can't do it without, who hired me? Dr. Daez, it's been 20 years. You know, I mean, it's been great. Watertown Public Schools has been a really good holder of these grants, and has been wonderful in their support. And DeeDee has just been as wonderful as everybody else. And poor Teresa had to sit through my whole curriculum thing for like an hour, as I showed her how we scaffold down to infancy.
And she showed me student work, which was impressive.
Absolutely.
I'm going to assume that you found, that you've worked with the library and with Project Literacy, which may be some of these people who are harder to reach. And I think this is an outstanding approach. I like the cultural element to understand why some people may not be reaching out, and I am wondering if there's, if there are people in the public who might be able to translate and who might want to reach out to you and say, I could translate some things for you. So I would, I would ask, would you be open to that?
Oh, absolutely. Our department within the school system was great. They helped us translate the ages and stages in 10 languages, which has been wonderful. Yeah, absolutely. And the library does sit on our board as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah. The children's department.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Lindsay.
My two kids also spent enormous amounts of time at the Family Network, and just as a, for the, any public who watches this or is paying attention, I remember going there. I met so many families, came connected to town by going there, but also lots of caregivers, like either daycare providers or grandparents or other also came. It wasn't just parents bringing their kids. And so I would just encourage people to not feel shy about bringing any child that's in your care to that area, because it's not just parents and families. Lots of kids and caregiver stuff bring kids together to come and play, so.
I agree. And dads, we have dads who come on, especially our science one. I think it's the STEM that gets them.
Okay, just want, you know, again, thank you for the work. I mean, you're kind of a gateway for many students that come into the, the school system, the preschool and on, so thank you all, thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do it.
Absolutely.
All right. Next up on the agenda, thank you for your patience, the High School Robotics Program, which I think just ended your season, is that right?
Yes.
Are you still going strong? Okay.
Have they written, I think they were at math night.
Pardon?
We're at math night at the hospital.
I think it's on.
So while I love to talk, as the students will tell you, I'm going to let them talk to you, but I wanted to tell you what a great group of students that Amory and I both get to work with, as well as the many other mentors that are there. The students work all year round, from September until June. They are truly, while not in the traditional sense of the high school things of, they are truly three-season athletes. They are there every week, at least once a week, if not twice a week, as we're meeting now during build season. They are there just about 20, we meet 25 hours a week for, through January through February, so we can build the robot that you will see in the video. So it's a large dedication by these students. They, I think they do like it.
Oh, yeah.
The amazing part to me is that after this 25 hours a week together for six weeks, plus weekend competitions that are two and a half days and twi-, two of those, that we all still come back to the school, and then we're like, wow, we kind of miss not being together every night. So I think that kind of says something about the team and what they're learning, and just how wonderful they are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So this is Alex and Henry and Juliana, and they, we have two juniors and a freshman that are here to talk to you about what you really want to know about, which is what they're actually doing.
Ooh.
Yeah.
You're captain.
So what do we do? Every year, we get a assignment and we build a robot. We have six weeks to build the robot, and then we go to a competition, and we compete, and a lot of fun.
Okay. So, what is build season? At the beginning of January, or the first Saturday, we have kickoff, which is where the organization reveals the game challenge for the upcoming build season. So we have six weeks to design and build and program the robot, and the robot has to meet rules that are in a manual that are, is over 100 pages long.
What was the deep space challenge? The deep space challenge required us to design, build, code, test, and drive a robot that could deliver cargo balls, which are like the yoga balls, install hatch panels, which are the like disc things that have Velcro on them, and climb the habitat, which are like elevated platforms that the robot somehow needed to find themselves upon at the end of the match.
So we spend a lot of time working on it. As you know, Mary Benham said, it's six weeks, nonstop, every day. And at the end of it all, we put the robot in a big plastic bag and we bring it to competition. Yeah. It's a, it's a fun time. And this is a video of our robot.
Yeah, the video will take you through build season and competition.
Thank you for your support of the Watertown High School Robotics Team. We have been working hard since the deep space game challenge reveal on January 5th to design, build, and program.
We can just talk about it. We can do that, too.
And the robots meet the challenge. Our robot, Oppie, named in honor of the Mars Rover Opportunity.
So it's a 123-pound robot. A lot goes into it, something we had, we got a CNC machine donated, so there was a lot of opportunity for us to design our own custom parts, which saves a lot of time and allows us to be more creative in designing our robot. Like, this frame, that's a very early iteration of our robot, it was one of our first prototypes. Our arm to pick up the hatch is very small and very fragile, and over time, that turns into a bigger, more stable arm, as you can see in this shot. So that was one of the rockets that we have to deliver the balls to. We have to bring it to all the different levels. And it was, it was a really big moment when we first got that to work. When we get to the event, before the event really kicks off, we get to practice matches, and that was the first time we really got to practice on a field, and it was a lot of fun, and it was really great to bring our robot out there and realize, wow, everything works. Which doesn't always happen. This stuff doesn't work. This is a video of our robot climbing the habitat.
And this robot is designed and built by the students. The mentors are there to give advice and give them, I don't know if that's going to work, but they came up, they come up with the concepts, they do the actual physical building. And programming, too, and the program.
This is a video of an actual match. At the beginning of the match, we can't actually see, there's a, like a blindfold kind of thing in front of our driver station, so we just have to drive the robot with cameras and sensors that we've already put onto it, so.
Yeah, we did.
We did. Yeah, we did really good this year. We're really proud of that. It's, you know, best that, like, this is the farthest we've gotten for the time that I've been on the team, and I'm very happy about that. Like, my freshman year, we didn't do so good, but, you know, as progressing and get better, we've improved every year that I've been here, and I hope that continues to happen.
So this is the selection for the alliance selection for the playoffs. There's three robots competing against three robots, so the top-ranked teams get to pick who they want to be on their alliance, because before that, it's been random. And so we got selected, we were ranked tonight, but we got selected to be on a higher number of alliance. And then this is the play, one of the playoff matches we were in. So what did you guys find about our alliance? Were we good at all things, or better at some things than other things?
We were definitely better at some things than others.
What were you better at?
Well, we can do balls really well for this match. That was something that, after a while, we were like, oh, you know, we can get some hatches, we can get some balls, and we got to a point where we were like, no, we can't, we'll just focus on the cargo. And we got really good at that, and that's what got us selected for an alliance for the playoffs.
Also, people who are scouting you during competitions, they're looking more for people who are, like, excel at one thing and can bring a lot of points at like one specific area, so you say, yeah, we can do like three things okay-ish. People like, will say, yeah, you're well-rounded, but that won't bring as many points, and but if you can like just do cargo really, really, really well, they would pick you on the team, and you'd also be getting a lot of points for your alliance. And that's why we kind of ditched the hatch idea and just completely went with cargo and had fun.
Yeah. So this year, at both of our events, thanks to David, we got the Design and Control Award because of our user interface, which allows us to accurately bring the balls up to the heights that we need them to be, just with like a touch of a button.
Can I ask, where was the competition? You sometimes like get BU, or where was it this year?
It was at Reading and Revere High School, so.
At Revere High School?
Reading and Revere.
Reading and Revere, okay.
And their competition's all over the Dade Creek District.
Yeah.
And those were the two that we selected to go to, because they are the closest, and we could go to one in May, but go to the next day.
Okay.
I was sleeping over with the robotics.
Next year.
Do you name the robot? I think last year you had a name.
So this year, we named the robot Oppie after the Mars Rover Opportunity, which stopped transmitting.
Cool.
Our robot did not stop transmitting, though.
I like the name.
There was like a big debate in the beginning, whether, what, what we should name it. People were like, we should name it Spoon. We should not name it Spoon. And there was like Athena as well, and there was Opportunity, and Oppie is just, it's a good tribute to what we were about, that like, we want. It's like a standard or something, I guess.
Okay. Questions or comments?
This is just the goal.
Eileen.
So this is a fantastic program, and I've watched it grow from nothing to this. I'm wondering, first, I want to just acknowledge that the people who are mentors, who are, a lot of them are community members, and I don't want to not acknowledge how wonderful it is to have so many people in the community who really give their time to something for no glory, just because they're interested in encouraging students in the STEM field, so thank you to all of them. I'm wondering, did you guys come to the robotics team because you were already interested in STEM, or did you sort of come and then realize there was something there for you?
Well, I know I definitely joined the robotics team because I'm interested in researching career in engineering, you know, science and stuff, so that was definitely something. And I wasn't really sure when I first joined the team, I was like, oh, I think I want to do something like that, but once I really got involved, I was like, yeah, this is, this is what I'm going to do for the rest of my life.
And the other two?
I did not know anything about the STEM field before I joined robotics, but I heard a lot of good things out from Henry here, and then some of my other friends on the team, and they really enjoyed it, so I tried it, and I really do enjoy it, so I'm glad I came.
Yeah, I didn't know how to do anything before I joined the team. Like, I came in, I think, and like committed myself to it like two weeks before build season, so it was kind of, hey, you're here for like four hours, you know, and you put it all together, and now you're in build season. So I kind of just like learned to love it through a relationship of, do this, or we will lose. Which, like, I was, you know, I was totally fine with, because I didn't mind, there was a lot of pressure, and it kind of made me like, like it even more, because I felt like what I was doing was like impacting and positive.
So have any of you chosen courses at the high school based on your STEM experience in, with first?
Yeah, definitely. I take a lot of the project lead-the-way courses at the high school, and I'm in the robotics class that started this year, and it's a lot of fun.
And the other two?
I had a lot of scheduling conflicts this year, but next year, I'm going to take the robotics course that Henry's in, because.
I'm trying to TA for it next year.
Good.
Yeah, I'm taking the literature robotics and engineering classes, classes of electives next year, and like before I joined the robotics team, I heard about them, I heard my dad talking about them, but I never really showed any interest, because I didn't like see the appeal at all, but now it's, I'm so excited to learn about it.
That's great feedback, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I know you guys go to a lot of the elementary schools and do demos, and I just want to say thank you, because not only is it really cool to watch this, but you guys are setting an incredible example for the younger kids who hopefully will join the robotics team in a few years, but also, you're showing them this really fun side of engineering and of STEM that I think is so powerful for them to see. So not only are you doing it in a way that's successful for you guys, but you're actually modeling it for our younger students, and I just, I'm deeply grateful for that, so thank you guys.
Yeah, good point. Anyone else, other comments?
Just quickly, their two senior peers are going to WPI, so that's exciting, too.
Okay. Thank you again, thanks for your, thanks to the sponsors and all the people that, the adults that help out, and all the students that have committed so much time to this, and it's great, congratulations on your successes, and thanks for coming. All right.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
Have to do that.
Only a few more weeks.
So next item, item, area seven are action items. For the action items, we'll start with the Policy Subcommittee. We have the second reading of policies in Section I. Eileen.
Let's get excited. So Section I, I think I highlighted a lot of it last time, but I'll, we've tried to make all the corrections that were pointed out. There are a couple of things I do want to point out. IGB was.
All right, say it again, I'm sorry.
IGB was kind of confusing the way it was phrased, and we just wanted to make it clear, so we've changed the wording, that the Administrator of Special Education Services also is responsible for non-special education services like psychological. exchange program, then the exchange program will take the legal liability. If this is a private exchange, in other words, I know somebody and they're sending their child over to stay with me for a year, then they have to have all kinds of documentation to show who is going to be legally the guardian of that child. But, it was the opinion of the town lawyer that we are not, we don't have a lot of liability exposure if we follow these guidelines, so that's our recommendation.
Let me just add, so that, that actually, I think, is in Section J.
Right.
My notes are, so that's one we set aside, and we'll come back to that, I should have maybe said...
So, when we approve the whole policy handbook next meeting, we can just fold that in.
Okay, we, we have a handful that have been set aside, and we'll come back to those and then approve the manual itself.
Right, so I don't know if there are any other sections that people have questions about, I think we've made most of the changes that we discussed.
With N I.
Yeah. Someone has a particular thing they want to ask about, I was asked to only hit the highlights. Hard to choose among your children here.
I think, on my notes, the one other one that we pulled out was a, there was a social media, I J N D D, right?
I J...
I think we...
N D E.
Is it?
I have I J N D D, which says, hold.
Yeah.
And it still says, hold.
That's the policy of social media?
Yeah.
So, that's one we, we are pulling out, I think, for this purpose, I guess, is that right?
Yeah, giving a little bit more time to work on that.
Right, right, okay.
There are always going to be single policies that we still have to work on, because this is a living document.
Right.
So, the other issue is, we tried to get some information and still haven't been successful from MASC about their hosting, about their fees, about whether they'll increase their fees, et cetera, so we'll try to get that before the next meeting when we're actually voting on the whole document, and it shouldn't impede our voting on the document. And then we'll just have to make that decision.
Okay. Is anything else on, on I? People have a chance to look through it, again, at the last meeting, we went through each policy and various suggestions were made. Everybody's comfortable with I the way it is? So, is there a motion to approve Policy I with the exception of I J N D D?
It's removed.
Section I.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. All right, again, thank you, Eileen, thanks to the committee, we'll, at our May 20 meeting, I think we'll wrap up what the final, we have a couple more that we'll look at individually, we'll revote the entire manual, and then hopefully we'll have the information we need to make a decision about whether we want to do the MASC hosting or do that kind of internally. Next item on the agenda is the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and we'll start first with the, I found it. All right, start first with the report from the Subcommittee. Kendra.
So, Budget and Finance met on May 2nd, it was John Portz and myself, Lindsay Moscow recused herself from the discussion regarding rental fees because she is a fiscal responsibility...
Fiscal responsibility for a position that was used in schools.
Thank you. So, there were two items on the agenda. One was a discussion of the new rental fee structure. The second one was a discussion about authorizing special education tuition prepayments from FY19 operating budget to FY20. So, in terms of the rental fees, we reviewed, Heidi Perkins reviewed the proposed fee structure and the accompanying rules. The fee structure included the four classes, we've discussed those before. First was the town and school in town, second was Watertown nonprofits in RAC that charge a fee and have 25 or fewer participants. The third is the same category, except if it's 20, more than 25 participants, and the fourth category is non-Watertown and for-profit groups, and so that's the four categories that was created for the fees. We had a discussion about the, the fees themselves, they're significantly lower than they have been in the past, at least on paper in the past. We also ran into, talked about the issue with our largest for, nonprofit Watertown partner, which is the basketball. And so we talked about including some cap language that would allow us to be fair to our largest partner, making sure we can support them, and also making sure that we're able to pay for the custodial services that is, that are really important. And one of the big changes we have from this year, last, this year, moving forward in July, is we're going to require a custodian there at all times, before we only had an open-close, and that's because of pretty significant safety concerns. We want to make sure that there is a custodian there at all times. So, we made a motion that we actually are not going to take up at this meeting, we'll take it up at the next meeting, because we want to make sure everyone has time to review the, the class descriptions beforehand. And the motion was, let me read it. "To recommend to the school committee approval of the proposed fee structure with accompanying details on charges for each of the four classes, including flexibility for the administration to rent the high school gym and auditorium, and an annual cap on expenditures as follows. Registered Watertown nonprofit groups that serve Watertown-only youths up to age 18 or the completion of their senior year in high school will be responsible for all custodial charges and applicable class rental charges up to a maximum of $10,000 per fiscal year or the total of all custodial charges, whichever is greater. There will not be any discounts or waivers for custodial charges for any group. The cap will increase annually by up to 3% as determ, may increase annually, that should have been May, up to 3% as determined each year by the Department of Finance and Operations, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations to keep pace with labor increases and inflation of associated costs related to maintaining the buildings and offering rentals." The motion was approved 2 to nothing. The next one was, as I mentioned, authorizing FY20 special education tuition prepayments. The law allows a certain amount of prepayment for special education up to three months for 766 programs, as well as non-member collaboratives, and prepayments up to a full year for member collaboratives. We did this last year, and it is a recommendation of the Subcommittee to do this again and allow the administration to use any, let me read the motion. "To recommend to the school committee that the administration be given authority to use available operating budget funds in FY19 to prepay special education tuitions up to the amount allowed by Massachusetts law." The motion was approved 2 to 0. So, again, we did this last year as well, and meeting adjourned at 7:20.
Is there a motion to approve the report?
It's removed.
Any discussion on the report? Yes. We're going to come back to the, the motions, if you want to talk about the motions themselves, but just...
No, I just had a suggestion, just before we polished that report or the minutes, can we just add the fee structure again to it, so when people are looking, they don't have to dive into an older meeting or an earlier document to find it? I'm just thinking... Oh, to the minutes? Yeah, just having that actual structure in that document as well, because I feel it'd be easier for people to access it that way. Yeah, no, I think that is a very good point. So, just the, just the, that, that Excel portion, so they can see it. We can kind of base that in.
Eileen?
So, my question is, why in the motion do we have the word class? Applicable class rental charges, wouldn't it be more clear to just say applicable rental charges? Because there might, it might not be a class, and there might be other charges which you'd want to be able to include. Is there a specific reason why that we worded classes there?
Yes, I asked this exact question.
Oh.
I know, I had the exact same question. Class is referring to the categories, class 1, 2, 3, and 4. Yes, because I said it should be space, but that is the reason.
Not classroom.
Not classroom, which is why it's capitalized, but I asked that exact question, yes.
We can clarify that, we're, we're not going to take up that motion.
No, I understand, but when we do take up the motion, maybe we could make that a little more clear, because I can see many other people reading this and saying, well, I'm not teaching a class.
Okay. No, okay.
I have one other clarifying question. We had discussed at Building and Grounds not renting the high school gym, so was there a shift on that, because...
No, we actually, that was, we came down in the same place about not renting the high school gym. The administration would like a little bit of flexibility, so if there is, you know, for example, baseball rents it for their tryouts once a year, so they wanted a little bit of flexibility to be able to continue renting to some renters that they, that they have, have done in the past, and they trust, and they wanted, so they wanted to have a little language that created that flexibility. But, there will be, like, not applicable for the rentals for those spaces, because, you know, we talked about, generally speaking, not renting them out.
Okay, and my concern on that is then there's that issue of equity that will come up, of why is it that some people are going to be allowed to have access to that rental and others not, which was the rationale behind taking it off the table. Heidi? I was like, I was waiting.
Specifically, the high school gym has the batting cages, and Little League or youth baseball has one day of tryouts when the fields are too wet for them to go out, so on a case where it's really one of the youth sports, essentially, would mostly be the reason why, so we wanted to just have the language so we weren't in conflict with our own regulations when we did allow something like that. But, for the most part, it would not be rented out, it's really for those groups that there is no other applicable space for them.
So, again, the motion is to, actually, at this point, just to approve the report, and motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Okay, thank you, Kendra. So, as Kendra said, the, the next item is the, the fee structure for the use of school buildings, but we want to have all that material together, people haven't had enough time to look through all of that, so I'll ask for a motion to postpone that or to postpone that until our May 20 meeting?
It's removed.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Okay, thank you, Kendra. So, as Kendra said, the, the next item is the, the fee structure for the use of school buildings, but we want to have all that material together, people haven't had enough time to look through all of that, so I'll ask for a motion to postpone that or to postpone that until our May 20 meeting?
It's removed.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. And then item three, I think we can go ahead and, and vote on that, to authorize FY20 sped tuition prepayments. And the motion, if you want to read it again, just to clarify, Kendra.
Oh, sure, I guess I started it, I can do that. Okay, so the motion is, "To recommend to the school committee that the administration be given authority to use available operating budget funds in FY19 to prepay special education tuitions up to the amount allowed by Massachusetts law."
That's...
It's removed.
All right, your second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Mark.
I think this is a prudent move that we've used in the past, when we've been, had the opportunity, and I think we should maximize this whenever possible, so I appreciate the committee and the administration for continuing to bring these things forward. Thank you.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, but I think in the past, when we've done it, we ended up, we were voting particular dollar amounts, and this is, we're trying to give you more flexibility, because we may not meet when they get near the end of the fiscal year, and she has to make a decision and move forward.
Yes, I'm not sure prior to FY18, but last year there was a specific dollar amount, but a lot of things fluctuate through the end of June and even early July with POs closing, and that we may have a little bit more, so we didn't want to be stuck to that amount or coming back for a second vote.
Right, okay. Any other questions? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a resolution in support of full funding for our public schools. So, I, I included this, it was requested, was sent to me by this kind of organization called Fund Our Future, which is union-based, the MTA, although I think there may be other groups that are kind of in this collaborative organization. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get someone to come to speak to it, so I will ask right off the bat here, do people want to move forward with this? I mean, I have some background information on it, some of you may have other information, we could move forward with it, or if people are uncomfortable with that, I could wait and try to get somebody to come on May 20th.
I think you should move forward.
I think we can, I'm comfortable moving forward with it, it's very clear the intent of the resolution, and it's not, it's not non-binding that we're...
Right, okay.
It's very simple.
So, let me, I'll go ahead and, and read the resolution. The resolution states, "Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs, whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services, and whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring the Watertown School District up to $1,191,480 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth, and whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state, therefore, be it resolved that the Watertown School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula." Is there discussion on this resolution?
I would just like to throw my full-fledged support behind this, and also just to say that this kind of has multiple components to it, so there's both Promise Act and the Cherish Act, the Promise Act focusing on K-12 education and providing funding for that, and the Cherish Act looking actually at higher education and the cuts that have happened there, and wanting to address and redress, I should say, some of the cuts that have been made over the past few years. So, while this is absolutely non-binding, I think this is that kind of moment where we can support the work that's being done in this coalition, which, as John pointed out, is not just the MTA, it is parent groups, it is student groups that are very heavily involved in this, it is educators from across the country, it's administrations, but to really focus on the fact that we need to do better for all of our students, and one of the ways that we can promote the best education possible is through funding a far better budget for all districts in our Commonwealth. And so, I, I think it's very important that we pass this, I think it's very important that we make this resolution, and that we stand behind the funding for our students that they deserve.
Let me just, a, a couple words of background, some of you may, may know, maybe three years ago, three or four years ago, there was a, a state task force on the foundation budget?
2015.
2015, and they produced a, a document that focused on the foundation budget, which is really the core of Chapter 70, and identified some of the, the weaknesses in it, in particular, that, that foundation budget goes back to 1993, when the Ed reform law was passed, and the two areas, I think that, as I recall, that they focused on in particular were special education costs and healthcare costs that haven't kept up with, they were estimated in 1993, and they really haven't kept up with what those costs are. And I think they were the ones in that document that came out with a, kind of, you know, $1 billion to $2 billion estimate, it was just, it was very broad. I did call MASC and got a little bit more information about it, because I was curious where the 1.19 million came from, and they said that that came from a document put together by the Mass Budget and Policy Center, where they looked at different scenarios of what might happen, and this was the most optimistic scenario. I mean, there is legislation that's being discussed now, none of them have quite that optimistic a, a dollar figure to it, but as it says in the resolution, it's up 2, so that's where that number comes from. And I will also say, MASC is not taking a formal position, they're not opposed to it, they're not taking a formal position. Other school committees have looked at this resolution, some have passed it, they don't know anyone that's turned it down, but some have passed it since, I think, late last fall is when it's been around.
One of 60 school committees of the Commonwealth.
Right, so that's just a little bit more background information. Any other questions or comments, thoughts? Got a motion? Motion to approve the resolution? Your second? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it, thank you. Next item is the disposition of surplus property. So, we have a list here of items, a number of them are kind of athle-
Make motion to approve the resolution?
Your second? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Thank you. Next item is the disposition of surplus property. So we have a list here of items. A number of them are kind of athletic-related types of items, helmet racks, ball carts, et cetera, and then a variety of kind of more office cabinet, desk, chairs, material that is older, worn out, scratched, broken, et cetera. And actually, we note here, there's a, we've had a nice contribution of office furniture that's replacing some of this. So is there a motion to approve the disposition of surplus property?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Thank you. Approval of gifts. We did approve, actually, did we approve? We didn't. Did we vote on...
We didn't. I was going to bring that up.
We didn't vote. It just occurred to me, we didn't vote on the cable.
Most important one.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't vote on the cable one. We will add that to this list, so we definitely need to approve that. Otherwise, Heidi can't deposit that check. So we have three gifts for the Allison Donovan Memorial Donation from Stephen and Joseph Doherty, Helen Donovan, and Anthony and Lisa De Palma. And we also have this gift of office furniture in kind from Histogenics Corporation, officer, office furniture for the middle school, quite a bit, actually. That's nice. So, and then we will add to that the $40,000 check from Watertown Cable. Is there a motion to approve these gifts?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Thank you. Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from our April 22nd meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, edits, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Thank you. Next item, we move into reports, and we have a report, an overview of the upcoming tiered focus monitoring study that the state will be doing. And Didi, you want to speak to this, or Kathy go straight? Up to you.
Sure, I'll just, just as a brief introduction, this is something that our all districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts go through on a rotational basis. It used to be known as Coordinated Program Review, which I'm sure that Kathy Demaris will explain a little bit more. This is a new way of doing it, tiered focus monitoring, so it's done every three years instead of every six, and we'll see how this change of time goes. But certainly, I think it helps us to do this every three years as opposed to having that one big one every six years. But like I said, we'll see how it all unfolds in the coming weeks. So I'm going to have Kathy Demaris, our Director of Student Services, provide an overview of tiered focus monitoring.
Great. And as Didi said, this in the past had been called Coordinated Program Review or CPR, and to make it more fun, in some of the areas, it is still known as CPR, so they're kind of shifting over in some areas. So some areas are looking dramatically different and some not so much. So I'll go over this as quickly and painlessly as possible. I know you had a really riveting memorandum that was sent to you regarding this. It was a lot of information to kind of get in, you know, in a short amount of time, but any questions, just please stop me and we can discuss. So these are the areas under review currently, so there's six areas. They're quite broad, covering special education, civil rights, federal grants titles 1, 2A, 4, I'm sorry, 4A, English learner education, career vocational technical education, and then a new area that was just introduced last school year, which was educational stability, which under ESSA, we have to provide equal access to students who are experiencing homelessness, who are migrants, who are living in foster care, or are part of military families. There were 33 criteria in that area. So this just shows the timeline, what we have been doing already, engaging and preparing for the onsite, and we are now right there. I'm at the bottom, week of May 13th, 2019. We have onsite monitoring happening in the areas of special education, civil rights, and CVTE, the career vocational technical education. The other areas will be reviewed in a desk review. That's English learner education and educational stability. Desk review basically means what it sounds like, so the Department of Ed will look at things from their spot, and if they have questions or concerns, they'll contact each, the lead in each of these areas. So when they changed from CPR to TFM, as Didi had spoken about, they're going to do some monitoring on select areas this year. Group A are the selected areas, and then in three years, we'll be looking at the group B areas, and it really does break down, special education is the largest area. It's very highly regulated, as I think you are all very aware. So those 58 criteria, I think it's challenging for us, and I think it's challenging for the department as well, to kind of look at all of those all at the same time. So they kind of split it in half, and this just tells you different ways that the Department of Ed is looking at our information. So student record reviews, parents survey. I did miss on there, there'll be interviews with some staff members as well, and just data collection and submission that they look at. This next fun-filled slide is the group A universal standard. So every district that is being reviewed this year and is designated as group A, these are the standards that they're going to look at. You'll see that it is almost exclusively special education areas. There are only three civil rights areas that were being looked at, so that's that. Color coding, one of the things that we do as student services directors is we look back in time at what has happened in the past, so those are things that we want to look out for. So in red are items that were findings back in 2012, which was the last time that we had a full onsite CPR, was called back in the day, now TFM, and they're also in red, because when the state came back in three years to do a mid-cycle, so the old system, they would come back and check in three years, okay, those things that were findings, you supposedly corrected them, are they still going well? And what happened in 2015 was that nine of those, there were 10 areas originally found, and nine of those areas were still found to be problematic in 2015, and so those are areas that I would be quite surprised if we weren't going to be scrutinized during the onsite visit in those regards. So I don't need to go over them at length, but if anyone has any questions about what any of those are, or can, you can let me know. Any? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Sorry, Amy?
I couldn't read the one on the left. What was it? L, what was that? SE 21, is that LRE?
Excellent. I'm glad you brought that up. So LRE, if you speak special education fluently, least restrictive environment. So that finding was around the way that we were documenting on our IEPs. It's called a removal justification, and I think that this body has heard me talk about inclusion pretty much every time I'm at the podium, and that's part of, the department's looking at making sure that we are explaining really well every time we're pulling a student out of the general education environment. Why is it that we can't provide those services within the general education setting? We have done some work with our team chair people in that regard, so I am expecting to have a better result in that as we move along. I do want to say as well, one of the things in the past, 2012 and 2015, in this district, we had the role of evaluation team chairperson, but it was not used consistently, and I think that might have added to some of these little glitches that we had in some of these areas. We have since provided extensive training to all of our team chairpeople, at least three days with Linda Waters, who's a very well-known former special education director thing from Wellesley way back, and she has done work with our team chairpeople, and they now run every single IEP team meeting, which they haven't been doing in the past consistently, so that we should see some more consistency across the board. This slide shows targeted standards, so this means that even though these aren't on the Unit A group, if there has been a problem in the past, they might look at this, and the only, the only one on there was the SE 18B, which was determining, sorry, determining the placement and the provision of the IEP, and that one, I also noticed in our self-study that that continued to be a little bit of a thing. So just regulations is a lot about timelines, so we are supposed to, after we hold an IEP team meeting, within 10 days, mail a parent the proposed IEP, and we just seem to be a little bit relaxed about our timelines. In general, parents have been pretty forgiving about that. That's not something that people have complained to the Department of Education about, but it was something that we did corrective action around in the self-study when I saw that that was something that we really needed to tighten up. This just tells kind of what the record review looked like for the self-study, so we were told how many records we had to review. It was 15, and it was just across the board to represent, be representative sample of, you know, what students are in Watertown. The findings that we saw in the self-study were all around timelines, so we talked about the IEP to the parents and guardians, that's a 10-day timeline, holding the team meeting to review the evaluations within 45 days. That was an unexpected surprise, and it was kind of interesting, because we thought we were timely, but we weren't counting the same way that the Department of Ed was counting. So literally, if you receive consent today, I have to count that as the first day, even if I get it at the close of business. So we were on the 46th day for, I think it was five files. So we just had to change like our spreadsheet for how we were tracking that information, and that should be corrected for this time around. And then meeting invitations to the parent guardian 10 days before the meeting. And this, we had a lot of good evidence that there was communication from the district to the parents saying, does this meeting work for you? Does this date work for you? So we had email trails, but the department really wants to see the actual formal document that is the meeting invitation to the parent 10 days before, regardless of what's happening via phone and email.
Is that when they also receive the report at the same timeline, the parent?
No. So when we have an initial or a reevaluation meeting that involves evaluation reports, the parents have the right to receive those or to have them available two days prior to the team meeting. And that wasn't, hasn't been a finding, so I would expect that it was still, I think that that's something that Watertown has consistently done very well. So in preparation, we have put out a press release in the Watertown tab. We have provided the department the name and email of every parent of a student with disabilities. Department of Ed has already distributed through that a parent guardian survey. We've also sent that out through the CPAC, that information, put it on our website, translated that into four languages in order to try and get the broadest outreach that we can to hear from parents, and then the special education student roster was sent to the department. What comes next? Erin Van Deavere, who's our chairperson, will do an exit interview with myself and Didi on May 15th. Any findings that are impacting individual students' access to a free and appropriate public education have to be immediately corrected. So if there's something that's impacting a student, we get right on that. They tell us, we fix it immediately. Aside from that, so things that are not impacting one, an individual student, they'll list a report that will be publicly available. They're saying within 60 days, that's a quick timeline. I'm hoping that that will be the case, and any findings of non-compliance that we learn in that report would have to be corrected as soon as possible and in all cases within one school year. Just what's coming after that with this cycle, corrective action during the upcoming school year, continuous monitoring, so just because we only looked at some of these criteria, the reality is, we have to be in compliance with all 58 criteria all the time in special education, and in civil rights, the 28 criteria as well. We will be doing self-study activities for the group B criteria, which are on the next slide, within May of 2021. Onsite and desk review monitoring would take place for that group during school year 2021, 2022, and then the next time the group A criteria would be revisited would be 2024, 2025. It's hard for me to think that far ahead, but just so you know what's coming. So that's just a quick overview of the group B criteria. Again, much more in terms of the civil rights and what's being looked at, and the only thing that was an issue in the past, special education-wise, was special education teacher licensure. Again, I don't think that that's something that we're going to continue to have as a problem, as we've been really good about making sure students, sorry, teachers are appropriately licensed or at times wavered in order to teach. So the next area was federal grants, titles 1, 2A, 4A monitoring. So during 2018 through 2020, we submitted materials for our district's FY 19 federal grant program, and there was one area that was in need of modification, and that area was family engagement. So basically, that slide tells you what that's about, not having a comprehensive family engagement policy that's in compliance with ESSA, those requirements, so it needs to be developed with families, and we have until October 4th of 2019 to demonstrate to the state that we have corrected that. Okay, our other areas. So we have English learner education and educational stability, so similar preparation for the desk review. We didn't have to do any press releases or anything like that, but the self-studies were completed in the spring. ELE had to look at student records as well, the same number as special education, which was 15. I had to submit documentation of all of the transportation that we've provided for foster care students, students who are, were homeless. Policies were reviewed, and as this body knows, we've updated a lot of our policies that will make us more in compliance with ESSA in terms of those groups. And we just had the Office of Language Acquisition Chair just contacted Kate Phillips in on Friday, May 3rd, so the desk review's getting ready. I have not yet heard from anyone in educational stability, so I'll have to be following up in that regard. So this just reviews the ELE criteria that are looked at, and again, I put in red what was found in 2012. There is no mid-cycle to refer to. I did in green, under parental involvement, ELE 7. That's kind of exciting. I think most of you are aware that we have a requirement now that just like the special education parent advisory council, the CPAC that is a requirement for us to maintain, we now have a requirement to have an LPAC, and Kate Phillips has done a really nice job in getting that started, so that's really good work. And we've also had more parents of, or parents whose first language is not English also participate in our CPAC meetings, so that's been fantastic with interpreters. Just a shout out to Kate in that regard. These, just for your information, these were the educational stability organizing elements. Again, it was brand new in the spring, and so these were the things that we had to answer to. I can't tell you what was a finding in the past or what might be a finding coming up. I do think there were a couple policies we knew that we needed to shift, and I just said, we are, you know, we're reviewing policies in the summer of 2018, which we did, so I think that they are now up to date, and that maybe the desk review, they'll say, could you just send us those policies, and that might be how that comes about. We'll see. More to come. And then these are the CVTE criteria, just for your information, and this is still calling themselves CPR. They have not changed over to calling themselves tiered focus monitoring, and both, ELE is calling themselves, it is TFM, but they look at all their criteria in year one, and then they revisit it in year six, so they don't do the same kind of cycling that civil rights and special education do. And this, they're just a little bit behind, I guess. They're still calling it CPR. And so similar in terms of what the cycle, what comes next, corrective action completed during that following year, continuous monitoring during all the other years, and then they'll do self-study activities in spring of 2024, and onsite and desk review spring of 2025. Okay, that was fast.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Busy, busy time.
It is busy times, yes.
Very busy time. Other questions or comments to Mr. Morris? Any? Okay, well, again, thank you for all the work that you have done, and you have a lot more to do, it looks like, so...
It doesn't, yes, it keeps going. I could talk about regulations all night, but I...
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, though. Next item on the agenda is the Building for the Future, first with the Elementary Schools Project. Mark?
Thank you. Couple of things to report on this agenda item. One is that the town council last week did a first reading on the first phase of $12 million worth of funding for this project. There will be a public hearing on May 14th and a vote by the council to move that, which means, once we committed ourselves to the first $12 million, we're committed to the rest, so that's pretty much exciting news, and hopefully, the town council will agree. Tomorrow evening, we're going to be interviewing three owners' project manager firms in front of the committee. I want to thank the team that interviewed and did rankings and brought three names forward, and I'm looking forward to finding a good match that will help us through our elementary schools project, and then on Thursday, we'll be meeting again to get continued updates on designs for all three elementary schools, as well as scheduling a vote to choose an OPM out of the three candidates. I thought that it was better that we do our interviews on one night, think about it, and come back, since we're meeting two nights later, to make a final decision, and that's where we are with the elementary schools at this point.
Questions? I would just reiterate the meeting on May 14th, the town council meeting, that that's a very important vote, $12 million. It really puts, moves the town forward on supporting these elementary projects, so I would encourage... I would encourage everybody on the school committee to come if you can, and encourage other people.
And anybody in the audience.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or at home.
Absolutely. Very, very important, and good, you know, important to show support for this project. It's a big, it's a big adventure for the town, a big project. Yes. Anything else? High schools?
Excellent. So today was a very big day. I'd like to thank Heidi Perkins and Lori Cable, both of whom are members of the OPM selection committee as part of the school building committee. They went today to the Massachusetts School Building Authority and went through what is known as the OPM review panel, where our recommended OPM, Compass, did a presentation for the OPM review panel. I believe they asked you guys some questions. Heidi was there, she has a better firsthand experience with this.
Yeah, Compass did a wonderful job with their presentation, it was very thorough, and they certainly have familiarity with the MSBA projects, and the panel was familiar with them, so that went well. And the project manager, Allison Meyer, was with them, which was wonderful. They went around through the whole panel and asked a number of questions. We did a lot of discussion about the lack of potential sites likely in town, and, you know, the traffic in the streets and all the things we're aware of with the other projects. So they were pretty thorough, asking about all those issues, and, you know, how would we work through that? But they said, we'd be moving on, and they'll send us a letter in the next, you know, 10 to 14 days, allowing us to move on. So that was exciting, and, you know, they seemed very positive, and we're very happy with all the responses that we gave them, and that Compass also provided to them. So I thought it was very, it was a very good sign, everything looked good, so.
Yeah, can you give the name?
Yeah, Compass Project Management is the recommended and now approved by the MSBA OPM for the high school project.
So they did approve, the panel voted, approved?
They didn't actually have a formal vote at that, but it seemed like everything was already, you know, is a go, so they said we would be getting a letter shortly about the next steps and moving on. So it seemed like it was all in motion, they didn't question that. But they were very, like, very thorough with everything that we had submitted to them, with the questions and any concerns, or things they talked about, communication, and they asked the OPM, knowing that some of the concerns that our committee had. And they asked them, you know, for more detail of communication, and how they would manage with the other projects going on in town, and just knowing that, you know, there'd be a lot happening. So they were very thorough on that. And then, for myself, and a little bit with Lori, just adding on how grateful we were for the project, and that we fully understand that we may have limited opportunities for sites, you know, we're very familiar with, you know, what there is, so, but that we were excited to hear what would come out of the feasibility, and that we recognize that, you know, whatever the recommendations are, that we don't have a lot of options necessarily, and that we're fully prepared for that, so. But yeah, it went very well, and they said afterwards, one of the gentlemen on the panel said that he was very happy to hear from people representing the school, that seemed very knowledgeable in construction and finance, so I think Lori and I represented well.
Good. Okay, well, thank you for that, thank you. Questions?
I have more, oh, not about the OPM, or about the high school?
Well, about the high school. Are you done, or you have more?
No, I have more.
All right, okay, keep going.
So one other thing that's an update about our high school building project is actually beginning tomorrow, the MSBA has invited us to be part of a design summit. So as we know, within the next several months, we'll begin work on our, with the school designer, that's the next step after selecting the OPM, on our MSBA school projects. But one thing the MSBA did is recognizes that many school districts who are beginning building projects would benefit from an infusion of design knowledge to assist with the evaluation of design ideas, particularly ideas that support STEM, project-based, and maker-centered learning. As such, they've invited three districts, so teams will be coming from Watertown, yay, Revere, and Stonem, to participate in a design summit to learn and explore cutting-edge, flexible, and responsive school design principles. We'll be able to bring our learning from this design summit into the visioning process that will be part of the designing of the future Watertown High School. With prior knowledge about forward-thinking school design principles, we'll be much better positioned to make the most of our high school building project. So we're very excited to kick that off tomorrow evening. Our team from our schools includes Dr. McGinnis, Principal Shirley Lumberg, apparent Erica Dornkamp, one of our teachers, Matt Rose, and one of our students, Fallon, her first name is? Emma, thank you, Emma Fallon. So they will be spending all day on Wednesday as part of this charrette, learning about design principles for schools. There's a kickoff tomorrow evening, anybody is welcome to join us from 3:00 to 5:00 at the La Cava Center at Bentley, from the school committee. And then, they'll be wrapping that up on Thursday in the morning, the teams will work together and put together thoughts about what a true 21st century high school will look like. And once again, we're invited to come back from 1:00 to 3:00 to hear what is they learned. This is not visioning for specifically the high school, it's helping us to really understand what a vision would look like for the high school. But again, we're very, very pleased that the MSBA thought of Watertown and invited us to be part of this process, so.
Okay. Questions for the, on the high school component? Yes?
Question on timing. Do you, when will the discussions regarding the site start? When do you think that will wrap up, based on where we're at?
So first, we have to find the designer, and that will take anywhere between, you know, three and four months. And then, in earnest, the discussions will begin in the fall. The first component of the feasibility is determining the site, because you can't design a building until you know where it's going to go. So, you know, I would imagine that for the first four to six months, that will be the major topic of conversations, and then move into actually schematic design, preferred design options than schematic design in the spring and into the summer. So that's pretty much the timeline for that. But the fall will be the majority of the discussions around the site.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have the same on this, Kendra, but also just, I want to say thank you to everyone who is doing this incredible amount of work, to Heidi, to Teresa, to DeeDee, to all the school building committee members. I know that this is a huge undertaking, both the high school project and the elementary school projects, and so to all the people who are, including the community members, just thank you, because this is how change happens, this is how we are making all of this progress, and about the time that everyone's putting in, we wouldn't be able to do so. So to everyone, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mark?
Not to be the bearer of the bad news to say, but it's still a piece of this that we need to discuss as a school committee, and that's an override. The town manager has clearly stated in his budget message to us last week, this isn't going to happen in the operating budget like the elementary schools. So I do think that we need to have that on our radar as a school committee, and begin thinking about how we're going to approach the community, and ask them to help pay for this high school project, because it's been stated a number of times by the manager that this is not going to happen the same way. And it can't. I can see that, and none of us, none of us can envision that happening. So I do think that that should be, we need to all consider, very shortly, how we're going to move forward with that. Just, I wanted to bring that up tonight, because we keep moving in forward steps, but there's one more step that we, it's not what everybody wants to talk about, but we have to talk about it.
Right. No, absolutely, and I think that, I mean, that's a critical step, and I think, you know, the building process, the building committee's kind of taking responsibility for that, but as you say, the funding piece and the, primarily the override component, we're going to have to play a key role in that.
I would say that the building committee's not going to play a key role in asking the community for an override. I would say that that starts with this body, who has oversight of the schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Eileen?
Can I ask, at what point in time we could expect to get a number, so that we would understand how much money would be in the override?
There's been a projection that's been out there, around $150 million, but until we go through this feasibility study, you know, and find a site, I can't see that that's a number that we should be stuck on.
Right.
Okay, it's just hard to think about the override without.
Right, right.
Understanding the extent of it.
But we need to, we need to start planting the seeds that this needs to be part of the process.
Right, right.
Can I add something to you?
Yes.
And the other thing is to remember, you know, we're not completely sure what the final reimbursement rate is, but we're pretty confident it'll be somewhere between 48% and 50% from the state. But that only covers reimbursable costs, which means that you can't take 150 and divide it in half and think that that's what's going to be reimbursed. So when we start to really talk figures, you know, it, you also have to recognize that, that our portion of that will be higher than that 48% that the MSBA is going to be reimbursing us. So, but it's still a very nice and beneficial partnership with the MSBA.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think there's some discussions, I know Kendra has had some discussions initially with, kind of thinking about what kind of networks and groups that we need to start tapping into around the override, and, you know, thinking back to what happened, what, 25, 30 years ago, and I still have a folder of all that material, and there was a lot of effort of reaching out to different groups, and we need to, we need to repeat that.
There was a, I think there was a $10,000 fundraiser, I mean, a $10,000 raffle-type thing, there was a lot of things that went on to try to help raise some money and bring the attention to.
Right.
I remember, school committee members went to different places and had meetings, and different school committee members took different roles, and.
Right. Yeah, I think Amy's going to play a role, too.
Yeah, and I think it's important to reach out to the people that were involved in it before, previous school committee members, or our community members that we've already reached out to that could help us as well.
Yep, okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry.
Dose of reality.
I'm taking the manager's role tonight.
That's an important dose of reality. Okay, thank you. FY 2019 budget update? Ms. Perkins?
Thank you. It wasn't too long ago, we had the last one, but the latest update, we did through May 2nd, only because there's a payroll that, just as the month turned, that was in flux, and it would have shown up differently from one month to the other, so that was intentional to give us actual numbers after that payroll posted. So as of May 2nd, the available budget is showing at 2.1 million, and that's 4.5% of the budget. As mentioned prior, the majority of the budget favorability is resolved, savings due to unfilled positions and unpaid leaves, turnover, and the prior year out-of-district tuition. And we also had savings in the special ed and Minuteman transportation lines, and added to this memo is also the Minuteman tuition line. We had a few, fewer students go this year than we had budgeted for, so we had some savings there. We'll continue to pay unencumbered payroll expenses, professional development, tuition, stipends, hourly wages. Those all tend to be paid out at the end of the year and are not encumbered, and we are actively in the process of hiring the kindergarten aides and security monitors, and even though it won't be long, that money is not yet encumbered. Again, some of these I mentioned, but adding some more, since the last time we spoke, about encumbered requisitions right now that have come in, for flooring replacement and asbestos abatement, additional facilities, equipment, and supplies since last month for all the summer and end-of-the-year cleaning, the air conditioning installations, we may not be able to do as much as we had hoped to for, because frankly, the middle school windows don't really support putting in window units, so we're going to be looking at potential other solutions to start on the more permanent air conditioning there, but we won't be able to do as many floors as we had hoped. At the high school, we, because of the weight of them, the windows can take them, but we have to have shelves built outside of all the windows to hold the units, so that is already approved, and that work's going to be done. So we anticipate putting the room air conditioners, window air conditioners into the second and third floor of the high school out of this year's budget money, and potentially looking at starting a little bit of the middle school air conditioning with the split units, depending on what we can do, so. So we are moving ahead on that, and Lori's still getting quotes for the middle school. We have some middle school furniture replacement, there's quite a few things there, even with the very generous gift, and I'll bring up again, histogenics. A parent at the Lowell School works at that firm that, you know, was on the gift list earlier, and they're closing offices in Waltham and Lexington, and it's like brand-new furniture, so we really got a nice deal there, but we still need to purchase additional furniture. Replacing some of the musical instruments, frankly, some of them are quite old, and, you know, we had our FAPA director look through and give us a list of those, so we've got those in, and the soundboards in the auditoriums. There'll be some significant additional facility work, we're trying to see if there's anything, and I already talked to Tom Tracy, if there are some things on the CIP that would have been a borrowing, that potentially we can move up if we have any funds, and then the town just wouldn't have to borrow. So we'll see how that works out at the end of the year. Light boards for the auditoriums, document scanning, library shelving, so there's quite a number of things that are in the works right now. We have an encumbrance, which I didn't mention before, but it comes up every year, the ESCO project that was done a number of years ago, on the unit vent heaters and things, probably eight, nine years ago, in the town buildings, and the way the town works that is, for whatever was budgeted for utilities throughout the town, and all the departmental budgets that's unused, the town has that come back to them to put into the stabilization fund to pay the ESCO debt service. So the last two years, it has been $400,000, that's what we have encumbered right now. That gets transferred back to the town. So that is already accounted for in the budget report. And then, again, we talked about, I have a PO that's been in of sort of a round estimate, or maybe doing some out-of-district tuition, but of course, that will change as the year closes. That's essentially where we're at.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Just a quick one, on the high school, the air conditioner, so in window units?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you know, down the road, I don't know what the lifespan for those could be, whether they were, questioning, people, some people are going to say, well, why are you putting air conditioning into a building that you're going to likely replace?
So, in answer to the first question, likely they will still be usable and be able to use, you know, other places in town, or we'd put them up for sale, whatever, in a few years. But for the second question, it is unbearably hot, especially in the high school as compared to the middle school. And while I might say that I grew up without air conditioning back in the day, people also didn't have it in their cars and their homes and everything else, and you weren't so acclimated. Nowadays, everybody is acclimated to mostly being in air conditioning, and, you know, it's something that we definitely feel for the morale, for a student, for people with breathing problems, asthma, et cetera, having those in is well worth the investment, and we, like I said, whether other town departments can use the window units later, or we would sell them, we'd get some return on them, but they're well worth the investment, in our opinion.
Okay.
And if you look at that realistically, we're not going to have a new high school for at least four, maybe five years. So I do think that it's, to all of what Heidi said, yes, people are going to question it, but how many 90-degree days we had last year and the year before?
Right.
And, you know, people were clamoring for something to give some relief to the administrators and the students, so. I do think we're well within, you know, our, being approved, being able to approve something like that, because we're a long ways out.
Right, okay. All right, that's, I just want to raise the question, because I'm sure somebody.
I want to help you just. I want to help you justify it.
Okay, that sounds good. Anything other questions on the budget? Eileen?
So have we figured out a way to account for the increased electricity use as we come online with these air conditioners?
You know, the price of the utilities fluctuates year to year, so, you know, have we sat down and figured out in 20 exactly what those will cost? No, we haven't, because we didn't know that we would have the operating funds at the end of the year to purchase these. It wasn't, it wasn't planned, but we do have the funds. However, we also know that by, I'll just use one thing, prepaying some tuition, that we know that we're going to have some flexibility, but not from tuition specifically, but there are other things that fluctuate. So we'll have some turnover. We had, for instance, a couple, one or more people that have given recent retirement notifications that were budgeted at their higher, you know, step and lane, and we'll probably bring in somebody that's less than that. So there's always some flow that will occur from when the budget is proposed and voted to, you know, with staff turnover and things like that, so it's not particularly a concern. I also am not sure, there's been some talk, but I'm not sure, that the utilities may potentially lift out of our budget and move over to the town budget in June when the council votes, so that they can sort of control, you know, more of the utilities throughout the town, so I don't know what will happen with that, but, so, but I don't think it's a concern either way.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Perkins. Next item is the enrollment. Dr. Galston?
Excellent. So our enrollment remains, you know, fairly stable enough to know that we're not going to hit any bumps in the road till the end of the year. I would like to mention. I would like to mention just a couple of things, though, looking forward to the 1920 school year. I keep mentioning that we're paying close attention to the kindergarten numbers, which came in a little bit lower this year than, than we had previously thought they would. And that is, that remains the case. We actually only have 38 students enrolled currently at the Cuniff, which is actually a reduction, will be a reduction of a classroom, which is helpful, because we have a pinch point at the Lowell that we're going to have to look at. So we're moving around the staff appropriately, but I did want to give people a summary of that. We have 76 students currently enrolled at the Lowell, which is very close to the maximum at the Lowell. And last year, we saw far more students coming in over the summer at the Lowell than anywhere else, so I'm watching that pretty closely. The Hosmer still is, is steady at 91. So if you recall, one of the things that we did is we reduced a kindergarten teacher in anticipation of that number. And we're actually adding a pre-K classroom, but having that FTE that's available from the Hosmer will help us at one of our pinch points, which is potentially the third grade at the Lowell, which is above caps, the guidelines. So we will probably be reallocating that over to the Lowell unless something happens with the numbers along the way. So right now, I don't anticipate any need for additional FTE, but I do, I do think that we'll be able to reallocate and help some of our pinch points that we have in our over-the guideline grade levels. So that's an update on the enrollment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
One question.
Yes?
So where are we total with K versus last year at this point?
Well, I could do the quick math. It's, it's probably a good 30 to 35 students less.
Which is where we were the year before.
Yeah, right. We're going, we're renormalizing. So the new normal is not what we experienced last year. I think we all, we...
It's like 220 or something, right? That's the new normal?
That, that is the, where we're probably going to ride. Yep, not 249 or 250.
And then, and that's, but the 220 is still an increase from what it used to be, which was about 180.
Yes. Yeah, no, we're definitely seeing in our, you know, K-1, 2, moving in a larger cohort of students.
Yes.
It didn't, it didn't readjust back to five, six years ago.
Right.
It's, you know, it's pretty healthy, but not so healthy that we need six teachers at kindergarten at the Hosmer.
Gotcha.
That was a big, big kindergarten class.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Other questions on enrollment? Warrants, we have a one-page list of warrants that have been signed in the last month. Any questions? Okay. Personnel report? We also have a personnel report, one page that lists various changes, absences, separations, et cetera. Any questions? Nope? Okay. School committee chair. I have a couple of kind of announcements and a few comments. One, building off of a comment that Mark made earlier about the town manager, the town manager presented the project, the budget for fiscal year '20. It's not the projected, it is the budget that he's presenting to the town council. He's presenting that. Town council will be going through various hearings. We have one scheduled for later in May.
The 21st.
May 21st? Later in May. What I wanted to do is just thank the manager for continuing the pattern from the last couple of years, where he has allocated a 5% increase for the school department in the operating budget. So I want to thank that, him for that support and anticipation, thank the council and the community for that support. A couple of other items, I want to apologize, we were, we should have had the school calendar for next year on the budget, on the, on the agenda. I missed that. So it, we did it at a draft stage, we looked at it, but we shouldn't, we haven't voted it, so we need to do that. And we will do that on May 20th. Another quick announcement of an upcoming event, and I'll send a flyer to each of you about this. Senator Will Brownsberger, working with Senator Jason Lewis, who's the new chair of the Joint Committee on Education, the senate chair, are having a session called the State of Local Funding in Local Schools. And they're going to, there's going to be presentations from Belmont, Watertown and Brighton, which is part of Boston, to this, to a meeting to talk about, each of those districts will talk a little bit about some of their school issues, particularly funding issues. And that's next Monday, May 13th at 6 o'clock. And everybody is invited. We'll have a presentation, several of us, superintendent and a couple of others may, will probably speak there. For our part of it, at the Honan Alston Branch Library, 300 North Harvard Street, Monday, May 13th. And also, just to let people in the public know as well, we're, we're at that time of the year, we, each, each year, we typically hear from the school improvement plans from the various schools. So at our next meeting on May 20th, we'll hear from the high school and the middle school, their school improvement plans. On June 3rd, the elementary schools. And then on June 17th, we'll have the district improvement plan. Also on May 20th, I think it's still going to be scheduled, we'll have a discussion about vocational education opportunities, which kind of looking Minuteman, but beyond Minuteman and other kinds of opportunities that are out there. And one last point, just to let you be aware of, you know, and partly in response to one of our earlier panel discussions on one of the policies about kind of connecting with the high school, high school students in particular. So I reached out to the, the high school and their student council and going to try to meet with them sometime in the next week or two, at a time that works for them, and just hear a little bit about some of their thoughts about how they can, are there, do they have other ideas besides, you know, they have a high school advisors, but are there other ways that they think about trying to engage a little bit more with the school committee? I think DeeDee's had experience, John Brackett before had his experience where there's a high school student as a non-voting member on the school committee, so that's one option. I know other committees have done that. So we'll look at that and I'll, that's just kind of to start the conversation, and then we'll come back and have some more discussions about it. That's my report. Dr. Galston?
Thank you. So I think it's very important that we recognize the fact that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the educators in our public school system here in Watertown for everything that they do every single day for every child. It's impressive, the level of commitment that exists here and the dedication of our teachers. And this is our week to, in turn, show our appreciation for them. So I know within the schools, there are several activities planned in terms of lunches and breakfast and everything else, but if you get a chance to stop and thank the teachers in the classrooms for everything that they do every day, I think that that would be greatly appreciated. Nobody goes above and beyond more than Watertown teachers. So that's one thing. The other thing I already mentioned was the design summit. We're very excited about attending the design summit over the next three days. The May 13th is a very busy night, apparently. It's also the vaping presentation at 6:30 at Watertown Middle School. So I encourage any parents who are concerned about, and children as well, concerned about vaping and its detrimental effects upon the health of our children, I would encourage everyone to attend that. And then my next coffee is on Tuesday, the May 28th. I know that there's another school committee meeting and I'll remind you of that, but it is a change of day, so it will be the Tuesday. And the last, just report is, our anti-bias coalition has been meeting and we had a very robust meeting just last week, where we participated in some restorative circles to help us to focus on what it is that we would like to do as an organization. And one thing that we do know is that we're going to kick off all of our events next year on October the 3rd for a community-wide event. So mark your calendars now, October the 3rd. But we are planning, one of the things that definitely the group is planning on doing is, you know, offering monthly, either set, you know, presentations or speakers to work with our, our community and our families, just to bring up issues around bias and making sure that we hold true to our core value of equity and try to do whatever we can to promote that. So that's just an update on our anti-bias coalition.
All right, thank you. Certainly add the school committee's appreciation for all the work that educators do. We have several on our committee here. Thank you very much. And the ones in Watertown, too. Thank you. New business? Any new business? Next meeting for the school committee is May 20th, 2019, public forum. Don't see anyone for the public forum. Motion to adjourn.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Guys have it.